As it turns out, we still meet the first and third Wednesday of each month. There were no conflicts with holidays or anything like that, so it will stay on that first and third. Everybody's got an attachment of it. Any questions or comments?
Yes.
I'll make this motion for the adoption of a resolution establishing the proposed schedule. And next year too, it may depart hereof as Exhibit A, the schedule for 2021 planning board meetings. All meetings shall take place in the Cicero Town Hall and will begin at 6:30 PM unless otherwise advertised. And that's in the form of a motion. Do we have a second?
Second by Snyder.
Second by Mr. Snyder. Mr. Resito.
Yes.
Mr. Abby.
Yes.
Mr. Snyder.
Yes.
Mr. Bloss.
Yes.
And I vote yes. And I hereby appoint Donald Snyder as Deputy Chairperson for the Town of Cicero Board. Mr. Snyder, you accept? Take your mic off, sir.
You know, I'm an old guy. I'll get used to it one of these times. I accept.
Thank you, Donald. And then lastly, just a note on the continuing education. Please note that the four hours per year is still required. And the New York State Planning Board Federation offers free lines now, free courses now online. And remember that if you go over the four hours, you can carry that over to next year. That concludes our organizational items. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from December 16th. Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion for approval?
Motion for approval as credit.
And Mr. Snyder, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bloss. Mr. Resito.
Yes.
Mr. Abby.
Yes.
Mr. Snyder.
Yes.
Mr. Bloss.
Yes.
And I vote yes. As long as I was talking about this team and how wonderful it is to work with all of you. I'd also like to, Steve, if you could pass that along to your office, Heidi and the whole office. I mean, they just make our job much easier and they do terrific job. I think I caught Heidi made the mistake once. I'm not sure, but they're phenomenal. So if you can pass that along, I would appreciate it.
I sure will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark?
Yes.
If I could make a comment, especially, you know, working with the codes office and Heidi, just fantastic. I get to the town hall. She has, she, you know, gave me some instructions quite a while ago. Call her and she's very kind to bring the paperwork out. She does a great job.
Absolutely. I agree. First normal agenda item is Syracuse Rust Proofing. This is for the property at 6189 South Bay Road, proposed automotive repair and or garage facility. The applicant is here.
Good evening. How is everyone doing? Happy New Year.
Good evening.
Just for the minutes, this is Vincent Ryan once again with Captain Joe Freeman Associates. Is everyone seeing the screen?
Yes.
Perfect. So as requested by Mark Parrish and the board, we did make the following changes. We identified the parking. We reduced the driveway width to 24 feet. We did provide some landscaping and some furnace signage to help direct customers and employees across the site. We have not received comments. We assumed everything was good since the last submission, which we provided previously before the holiday. So if there's any questions, I'm willing to take them.
Thank you. Mr. Resito, any questions?
Nope. All set.
Mr. Abby. Also all set. Plans look pretty good now. Thanks for those adoptions. Mr. Snyder.
Agree. It's a great, great layout. I think the driveway situation in the front now makes sense. What they did with the customer parking lot looks also good. So I think they really responded to Mark's comments. Good job.
Thank you, Ben. Mr. Bloss.
I'm good to go.
Mr. Marizio. Looks good to me. Mr. Procopio.
I am all set. Thank you.
Mr. Parrish.
No, the only, just one quick item, I guess, is they didn't, did not include any signage with this package. They indicated that they would do that with a separate application. So I'm sure Steve will review that. If it needs to come before the board, he'll bring it before the board or else it complies with the code. I assume he'll just approve that separately.
Correct. We will apply for the sign waivers separately. I believe we're right now, as it's noted on the plan, it's going to be a building mounted sign per note. 11, but we'll get that in as a separate waiver. We're not along in that process yet.
Yeah. Other than that, that's the only comment I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Jermaine.
No, no real comment other than that, I think we should call out that the improvements were not in the Niagara Mohawk easement based on the county referral. So I would recommend that any motion have that, some language in it to set that forward.
Agreed. Thank you. I have no other comments at this point. Mr. Resito, would you propose the standard seeker motion?
Yes, I propose our standard seeker and that's in the form of a motion.
And Snyder, second.
Thank you, Donald. Mr. Resito.
Yes.
Mr. Abby.
Yes.
Mr. Snyder.
Yes.
Mr. Bloss.
Yes.
And I vote yes on the seeker. Motion passes. Mr. Jermaine, would you propose a motion?
Yes, you're going to move for the adoption, you're going to move for the adoption of a resolution approving the application known as Syracuse Rust Proofing Inc. Zbar 6189 South Bay Road, proposed automotive repair and or garage facility. This approval is strictly conditioned on the following. One, the color schemes and renderings and or elevations presented by the applicant to the planning board in regard to this application shall be incorporated by reference into the site plan and the board's approval thereof. Accordingly, the actual project must substantially conform to the items as presented herein. Two, in approving the site plan, the planning board notes that the site plan was revised so that the proposed improvements are not in the Niagara Mohawk easement. Accordingly, there's no need for the applicant to provide documentation from Niagara Mohawk Power Corp. Corp easement as set forth in the county referral.
Thank you, Neil. Any questions or comments on the motion? I'd like to try something a little bit different. I don't want to make every motion. If somebody would like to make a motion on any item, I want to open it up to you guys first. We're starting to narrow it out that way. Would anybody like to make that motion?
All right, let Dan Snyder do it.
Mr. Snyder made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Resito. Mr. Resito.
Yes.
Mr. Abby.
Yes.
Mr. Snyder.
Yes.
Mr. Bloss.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. You too.
Thank you all very much.
Next item on the agenda is Burdick RV Store. This is where the property at 8560 Brewerton Road, to propose 3,077 square foot showroom expansion. Welcome back, gentlemen.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. I'm Alex Waznuski from LJR Engineering, and I'm here tonight on behalf of John Burdick, who I also see is with us tonight, to ask your consideration of a site plan for, Mr. Burdick would like to expand his showroom with approximately a 3,000 square foot building addition. They had a site at 8560 Brewerton Road, 6.9 acre site on the east side of the roadway, currently zoned as GC. Last time we were with you.
Excuse me, one second. Can you put up the new?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Sorry for the interruption.
Can everyone see that okay?
Yes, thank you.
Great. So essentially, Mr. Burdick would like to build this 3,000 square foot expansion. There's going to be limited other changes to the site. We are going to create some field of customer parking in front of the site there. One of the comments that we had received was, I'll zoom in on sheet two, is kind of a zoom in of the front area here. We were asked to show the location of the freestanding sign that currently exists, which we note there with a key note. We do plan to incorporate a striped island to encapsulate that sign location. And then we're creating some new customer parking spaces across the front of the site. We were also asked to designate an ADA compliant handicap, excuse me, ADA compliant parking space and signage, which are also shown. We were asked to add some landscaping across the frontage there. One, one point of note, it's not the most ideal place to landscape, given that we've, there is a sanitary sewer easement that extends through there and there's also power lines up above. Mr. Burdick would like to plant, I think we've got nine dwarf Mugo pines proposed across the frontage there. There was a request to provide color samples of the building. I'm not sure how great they'll translate on here. This is an example of the building colors. The main body would be a slate blue with the trim as an Arctic white. And then the accent stonework across the bottom would be this Mission Point stonework. Mr. Burdick also made a small change to the, the front elevations, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, John, those, that the front windows are going to be slightly taller than was originally proposed in the first, so we had sent in this new plan. And I think that was the changes. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Alex. Mr. Resito, any questions?
No, looks good. Very good.
Mr. Abby. Oh, that also looks very good and adds a little more pride in the Town of Cicero. Mr. Chuck, Mr. Snyder.
Yeah, I just checked the elevations you just showed, the front elevation. Is the roof now going to be flat?
No, oh, no, sir. The, the top elevation is the existing elevation and then the lower one is the proposed elevation.
Okay, great. The other thing we talked about last time was that if Mr. Burdick is thinking in the future having storage, winter storage that you put it on the drawing and show a spot, have you, have you done that for him?
Yes, yes, sir. We go to the back to the first page here. I tried to designate all the intended uses of the parking field here and we've shown and designated this as a potential winter storage in this back corner.
Good. That'll just help him in the future. We wanted to come back and ask.
Understood. Appreciate that.
That looks good.
Thank you.
Mr. Donald, Mr. Bloss.
Yes, I think it's definitely going to improve that Route 11 corridor. You know, we've, we've tried to get things looking a little better up through there and that's definitely going to improve that.
Agreed. Mr. Marizio.
This looks good to me. Thank you.
Mr. Michael. Mr. Procopio.
All set. Thank you.
Mr. Parrish.
Nope, no comments here. Plan looks good.
Mr. Jermaine.
All set.
I am all set as well. Mr. Resito, would you please propose the standard seeker?
Yes, I propose a standard seeker and it's in a form of a motion.
You have a second? We did the second. Chuck?
Yeah, I think I beat him by a half.
Mr. Resito.
Yes.
Mr. Abby.
Yes.
Mr. Snyder.
Yes.
Mr. Bloss.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Seeker passes. Neil, would you propose a resolution for approval, please?
Yes, you're going to move for the adoption of a resolution approving the application known as John Burdick, Burdick RV Store 8560 Brewerton Road, proposed 3,077 square foot showroom expansion. This approval is strictly conditioned on the following. One, the color schemes and renderings and or elevations as presented by the applicant to the planning board in regard to this application shall be incorporated by reference into the site plan and the board's approval thereof. Accordingly, the actual project must substantially conform to the items as presented herein.
Would anybody like to make that motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Bloss. Do we have a second?
Second again. Seconded by Mr. Abby. Mr. Resito.
Yes.
Mr. Abby. Yes.
Mr. Snyder.
Yes.
Mr. Bloss.
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion carries. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thanks so much, everyone. Have a great 2021.
Thank you. You do the same.
Thank you. Thank you.
Stay safe. Thank you, gentlemen.
Next item on the agenda is a sketch plan review. This is for St. Francis. The property is at 7820 Route 298. It's a two lot subdivision, right?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Joe Lupia, speaking on behalf of St. Francis Parish.
Hi, Joe.
Mr. Chairman, should I proceed?
Yes, please. Do you have the map? I don't know if the board members received the information yet in hand. I know we got the digital. We just distributed out the hard copy. If we can get a map put up there would be helpful.
I don't have the electric cat, the capability of presenting that electronically.
I can put it up, Mark, if you want.
Thank you, Mark. I should go now and do this too. There we go.
Very good. This is a two lot subdivision of one existing lot. There's going to be no additional buildings. There are two buildings on the one lot. The building on lot one is a rectory. It had been vacant for 14 months. It caught fire in August and it had to be substantially rebuilt with the condition that it's got to be sold. The diocese is requiring that that building be sold. So to do that, we are asking for a subdivision separating the rectory from the church that is located on lot number two.
So it's to be sold to a third party?
Yes, we have nobody in mind yet. We, we need approval from you before we consider moving forward.
Okay, thank you. If you have questions, Mr. Resito.
It has to be sold, but you don't have a buyer yet?
Correct.
Okay. Nope.
The reason it's got to be sold is we do not have priests. There's absolutely no priests around. It's never going to be occupied again.
Okay.
Mr. Abby.
I'm just curious, what's in that lot behind lot one that runs down to the creek?
The only thing in that lot, it's, it would be in lot number two now, is a garage for lawnmowers.
Oh, okay. Just wondering. Glad to see I'm not the only one with a Christmas tree in the background.
Mr. Snyder.
Yeah, the only question I got, of course, being a former Bridgeport member and my wife was a member of this church. The driveway that is being split down the middle, I think, isn't that used as a two-way driveway right now? And I'm just wondering if there's something that we need to do relative to cross property access so the person that buys the property can come in and out and the church can come in and out? Is there a need for that?
You are correct. It is used both directions currently. I don't know exactly how we would do that. That driveway at its narrowest is 32 feet. So when we're dividing it right down the middle, we're going to have at least 16 feet on each side of the driveway, which should give substantial room for vehicles to pass each other. But the church also has its own entrance to the south. There's a driveway to the south that is used also for the church.
Yes. I'm just wondering if that, you know, does that mean that, that, you know, put a, have the new owners have to put a fence down that driveway?
Don?
Yeah.
If I may, they could handle that in a number of different, a number of different ways. So as the owner of the property, they could come up with a common driveway agreement that allows both parties access to that driveway for ingress and egress.
Good.
But it could be on what we actually have to do as far as the, you know, the subdivision.
Yep. Okay, sounds good. I'm good.
Mr. Bloss.
I'm good to go.
If I could just piggyback on Mr. Snyder's comments. I haven't been by the site personally yet, but I did look at it on Google. And on Google, it shows that North driveway as a one-way. In fact, there's a sign out there, no arrows. That's now, no longer the case.
I don't know that it's one-way. It's always been used as a two-way, the North driveway.
Yeah, Google showed the exit sign there. And then there's also parking on both sides of that drive, or I would assume. I'm not, not sure what I would assume for. So I don't know. It looks like, well, I guess I'll just look for questions, answer some of the questions because on Google, it looks like there's really only room for one-way traffic if you got parking there. So however you want to handle that.
I think we would have to remove the parking in the drive itself. You can see there's some handicap spots on both sides of that driveway. And I think, believe the handicap spots would have to be removed. And there's all kinds of room behind the church for handicap parking.
Okay, yeah. If you see, thanks for pulling that Google up, Mark. You can see there's a one-way arrow and then that sign on the left at the road says exit. So the traffic pattern is going to change a little bit, I would presume.
And we could remove those arrows. Paint right over them.
Yeah, so if you could just address that when we get together next time, that would be terrific.
Okay.
That's all I had. Mr. Marizio.
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Procopio.
Yeah, I would just, I would just advise the board, you know, Mark, Mark Parrish will put this in his, his review letter. You know, this is residential property R15, lot two, being that it will be non-residential use. Doesn't quite meet the bulk area requirements for a non-residential lot where it doesn't quite have two acres of property or it doesn't meet the lot depth. So a variance will be necessary with this current proposed subdivision.
Steve, is this agriculturally zoned or is that why?
R15. R15. Yeah.
It's a lot two has the issue or lot one?
Well, lot one is intended, and Mr. Lupia can correct me if I'm wrong, is intended to be sold as a residential use property. So it, it, bulk regs will be like a typical R15, lot 85 by 130 in depth. Lot two being used non-residentially, you require two acres of lot area, I think 240 feet of lot depth for non-residential use.
That's in our 15 zoning?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
That's my understanding as well.
But doesn't the church own south of the church building? You have your activities building. Isn't that also your property?
Yes, that is. And in addition to that, south of the parish center, we also own six additional acres.
So what I was wondering, Steve, is can they maybe do a combination so that lot one would be much bigger, would include the parish center? And then they would be able to meet their, that bulk requirement?
Lot two. Lot two, I think you mean, and that's potentially a possibility. But I guess you'd want to show that now.
Right, right. You'd want to, you'd want to change this and show that lot two is expanded to the south and includes the parish center.
Yeah, it just depends on what the church's intentions are with the land.
You think that, is that, is that something the church would want to do?
And, and the reason for that is right now the church is not being used at all. All masses are being conducted in the parish center. So there's a possibility down the road, if we continue using the parish center for church activities, that the church might be sold. But the parishioners would have to give a green light on all that before we could seriously consider that. But that's a possibility.
Steve, would that mean right now they would have to go to ZBA to get a variance because they don't have the two acre requirement for lot two?
Correct.
I prepared the paperwork and I'm submitting it at this time.
For the variance?
For the variance to the ZBA. Yes.
You got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Mr. Parrish.
Yeah, so this is kind of the first time I've looked at this closely. I see there's a note on here about the sewer service. Down here, it indicates that the church building is connected to the public sewer through the sewage disposal system for lot one. And this house is on public sewer, so I'm looking. The, the issue that that brings up is that you can't have a lateral, a part, a private lateral that serves two separate properties. The lateral needs to connect to a public sewer. So I guess we're going to need to look at that a little bit closer to see how that's laid out and what that means. There is, and this looks pretty accurate based on what I'm looking at here on the county's GIS site. They are showing a sanitary manhole up here. So we may need to do some work to separate those two laterals and there may be the need for an easement to come across the property here.
Our intent is to do exactly that. It's, it's very convoluted. The church's sewer line goes directly northbound, goes behind the rectory in lot one and goes around the north side of the rectory out to the sewer. So if, if in fact this board gives us approval, we're going to be doing two things. We're going to be putting a new sewer line directly from the church building out to a lateral, which is directly in front of the church building. And we're also going to be putting a water line. We're tied in with the rectory's water line as well.
Okay, good.
And we're putting a private water line directly from the church, directly across the street to the west side of Route 298 where there's a hookup.
Okay, it's good that you've, you've, you've identified that. So we're, we're going to want to show that, those improvements on this plan. And I'll get comments to you so you don't have to remember all this right now. Yeah, I'll, I'll review this. We'll get comments out to you. But yeah, so it sounds like you've, you're aware of this at least and have some plans in place. So we just need to get those shown on the plans. And so we're clear as to what's happening and any easements or anything that might be needed, you know, are shown and conveyed as part of the subdivision.
Okay.
And we've talked about the access here, the driveway. And, you know, we'll just have to figure out how you're handling that, whether it be with an easement or some other changes to the, to the entrances and that type of thing.
We're trying to avoid all easements, so we would do a common driveway agreement relative to the driveway.
Okay.
And then, and then we wouldn't need any other easements because we have brand new water line and brand new sewer line coming right out of the church.
Okay. Well, I'll let Neil review those agreements and make sure those are appropriate. But just as, you know, first look here, that, that's the issues that I see that are, you know, need to be addressed. So thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Jermaine.
I think Mark pretty much covered everything for me. Joe, Mr. Lupia, just provide me with the easements. And if you are going to use a, you know, some kind of common driveway agreement, you know, I would like to see a copy of prior, you know, to final vote on it.
I can provide you with a draft of one, but obviously we don't have a buyer yet to agree with that common driveway agreement. But I can, I can forward to your office on a proposed common driveway agreement.
Just, okay. I have nothing further, except are we going to talk about a public hearing now? Are we going to wait until after there's, you know, he gets the variances? Probably going to wait, right?
I would think we would wait until he's done with the very, yes. Yeah, we'll wait on that. That's it, Neil?
That's it.
All right, so terrific. Mark will do a thorough review. Based on the current conversation today, he'll get out a letter to you and we'll take it from there.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Yeah. Last agenda item is for Premier Southern Autos. This is Gary Gasparini for the property at five-six-five-five East Taff Road, post auto sale. Gary and Tom, are you here?
Yes, I'm here. I'm under Steven Gasparini, but I'm using my son's computer on vacation. Um, so, uh, I, I am Gary Gasparini. Tom, my son.
I'm here as well.
Hi, Tom. I'm glad you got the, uh, address log in.
Thank you.
Mark, can you get the map up for this? Please? Thank you. All right, gentlemen, would you like to go through what it is you're looking to do?
Yes, certainly. Uh, thank you for meeting with us and Happy New Years and, uh, a little bit of, uh, what's been occurring here. Uh, we, we have an accepted purchase offer on this property contingent upon getting, uh, permit for auto sales business. Uh, the property's been vacant for several years. It's in quite a bit of disrepair. Uh, but like I said, our office is, offers contingent upon the approval. Um, I've got two site plans. One is an updated survey, uh, by Paul Oshavsky, Land Surveyor. And then the one that's presently up, which is kind of just the landscape plan to clean things up a little bit. Uh, we're not looking to change the parking site. Uh, change the building. We're, we're actually making no changes. We're just gonna go through and, and make the place presentable, clean, in a nice appearance. So it's basically landscaping, uh, parking lots, and somebody's driven in it in several years. All the cracks are producing weeds and we're gonna clean the cracks up, reseal the driveway, uh, re-stripe it. Uh, the existing light poles, we would reuse, but change the fixtures and that included that, the fixtures that might pack it. Uh, the existing signposts, we're gonna use, but we were going to move, so it was twenty feet in from the property line, which is presently right on the property line. So we're gonna move that and replace the sign. Uh, naturally paint the building, uh, put a new roof on it, uh, the interior. We, I'm not gonna change any of the current structure of it, uh. The walls, the sheetrock is gone, but the walls are all still there. So we would, you know, redo the walls, redo the floors and it, uh, reuse the existing wiring, but probably improve on it. Same thing with the existing plumbing, we reuse what's there. Uh, and there'd be no changes on the inside where the walls are. Um, and I think that, uh, it kind of gives an overview. I know I've included pictures of the site, um, and all the, again, the fixtures we're gonna use, signage we're gonna use. Um, and, uh, you know, this would be a, I own the property if, once, if, once we close on it, my son would be running a business out of there. Uh, we're currently running it, uh, out of another site on a much smaller scale. And, um, this, this is Tom's, uh, you know, place to kind of expand his little business a little bit. Um, I think that's, uh, all I can think of to, to start off with.
Thank you. We'll go through for questions. Mr. Rosito? Show your mic.
Come on. No, no questions at the moment.
Thank you. Mr. Abby?
Um, it'd be nice to see that, uh, active again, because it, like you said, it's been vacant fifteen years. Um, how is the blacktop, uh, say around the back example? They have to be redone or is it savable or just need repairing?
I, I, I think basically all the cracks need to be cleaned out and filled. Um, I think if it was an active-use parking lot, there wouldn't be any weeds and it'd be just cracks. Um, so we'd be basically resealing the whole parking lot, but not replacing any of it and not adding to it.
About how many cars were you thinking of, uh, displaying at the time?
Um, I think on my application, I wrote an amount, um, which I'd want to refer back to, um, you know. Naturally, in the initial part, there won't be a lot, because we're kind of starting up. Uh, Tom, would you remember the amount we were, we were talking about?
I think we initially planned on about sixty, sixty to seventy cars.
Okay, that would take up quite a bit of room, so. Um, out front there, is that the parking booth, display your customers, uh, in front by the, uh, next to the building? You got five spots plus handicapped, I'm assuming that's customers on?
Uh, yes, uh, those would be customer parking. Naturally, car sales, you don't have a lot of visitors. Um, so it would be, uh, employee, which we really don't. It'd be my son, uh, his fiance, me occasionally, and, you know, uh, we're thinking perhaps as if things get going better, you'd have a person to help them out there. Uh, so it's, uh, cases we can expand on it. And naturally, it's a huge part of the lot. Um, and, um, basically the employees can probably, are, I'm in the building, if we really had that many people visiting. But, um, our sales, I think, is typically not heavy visited type of business.
I assume the, 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 there's quite a few, let alone the east half road, uh, place.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Most of the cars would be on the half, half road, uh, area there.
So we'd be looking to, you know, naturally put a row along, uh, the main fence line along the road. And naturally down the sides and, um, you know, in the rear of the building.
Okay. I, I, I would like to, uh, see a mock-up of, you know, cars parking, uh, you know, around the perimeter there, to see how six or seven cars would look in that area. Sounds like a lot of cars, but, you know, they add up pretty quick. It's a good start. Thank you.
So, yes, we can do a mock-up on that, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chuck. Mr. Snyder?
Sure, I'm glad to see this property, uh, possibly get reused, because it's, I've driven by it for years in its empty state. The only question, um, I would have is, uh, do we need to mark in, in, in a very gross way, uh, on the pavement? Um, if you plan to have cars, you know, coming in, uh, when they back out of their parking spot, would they drive around the building or, you know, is there, there just doesn't seem to be a, um, what would be a natural, uh, route that they would take when they backed out? Uh, now, obviously, if there are cars parked from the, um, east side of the building towards Route eighty-one, they can't get through there anyway. But I'm just wondering if we need to have some delineation on, uh, the area that the cars, you know, you say it in a very gross way on the drawing. Um, but there is no indication of whether there'd be cars parked in the, uh, I actually, uh, actually, the way you draw it, you show a lot of space between the east side of the building and eighty-one, uh, being clear. Because you, the mark where you say car sales area, uh, that's quite small. So you might want to look at that a little different.
Hey, yes, I think what we can do is do a mock-up on cars and their location. And actually, I, I think we were, we were stating the amount of cars. I guess we never really did, uh, plot them out in a logical sequence. And, uh, that would probably be a great idea for all of us involved. And the arrows, you know, and actually, we have to figure out a traffic flow. Uh, and we can do some arrows for entrance and exits.
Mark Parrish, do you have the other plan that Joe's where they want to park the display cars?
This one here?
Yeah.
There's also a color, a color plan, I think.
The color one, yeah, shows it.
Yeah, the color one. Uh, hang on, let me see if I can find that. Uh. Well, maybe it's this one. Hang on. No, it's just a floor plan. Uh, are there multiple sheets here?
Yeah, let's see.
Steve, was this sent, I don't. I got the survey up. I've got the.
It'd be L zero-zero-one.
Boy, uh.
You might have got it electronic. Maybe it's still in an email, Mark.
Did we get, yeah, let me, uh.
Yeah. You might have gotten that additional stuff just this week.
Um, let's see, uh. Premier, is that what she sent it there?
Yes, Premier Southern, yeah.
Yeah. Um, let me re-bring up the email. Now, these were the only. I got the survey up. That's the black and white. This is the building layout that I just did. Let me check this one. That's, uh, maybe it was attached to this. Uh, no, I don't, I don't see it. Um. No, this is the, those are the only files that I have.
Very well. The one that shows, most display area that you had the black and white one, that's probably the best at this point.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, we need a twenty-two-foot drive aisle minimum here. Um, I, I think we're gonna be hard-pressed to get car sales out here, but again, we'll have to see about that once they get a plan together.
Where's that?
I'll get comments to them, but, but this definitely needs to be marked up and to show, you know, where they intend on storing cars. Now, how many cars did I hear that there, there was thinking of storing?
See, we said sixty, but naturally, uh, maybe there's not room for sixty cars.
Yeah.
We could do a mock-up on that. Um, I do know, we actually, uh, yeah, we could do a mock-up on it.
Yeah. I, I think sixty is gonna be hard-pressed unless you're going off of the currently paved area. Um. The, uh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it, that seems like.
Now, question to you then on that, uh, and that, my survey didn't put it on here, because he just updated it all as well on. The bad part of the parking lot, the original survey, that is actually a gravel parking lot beyond it. It's just, nobody maintained it and it grew grass. Um.
Not really seeing that. This pavement doesn't look like it's in very good condition. So, I mean, um, yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
I mean, we can lay it out and see what fits logically and, and presented at that. Um, I guess we were kind of just, uh, and actually, some car sales, you can double stack them in, because they're, um.
And I'm not seeing a lot of room for that in this, in this paved area. So if you're going beyond the paved area, and, and I don't really see a gravel area here, I'm not seeing that there, but it certainly isn't showing on this aerial, um.
Then maybe it's a future thing. Maybe we, and actually, I think it's a, um, didn't know what to start with, but we'll see. Naturally, we want to make this property work with what's paid now. And, and maybe it's a future proposal that, uh, we have to come back with if sales go well to expand the parking lot.
Okay, now, we, we need a good layout. And we'll, we'll, I'll get comments beyond this, um, after hearing the board's comments tonight. And, uh, you know, you, you can go back to the drawing board, so to speak, and, and get us a plan that, that shows more detail.
Thank you, Mark. What did I leave off? Who was, who was next? Mr. Blas, have you had a chance?
No, I have not had a chance, but that's okay. No, no further questions, Mark.
Thank you. Mr. Marizio?
No further questions, but I'm glad to see the building's being looked at.
Agreed. Mr. Procopio?
Nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Parrish, anything additional at this point?
Uh, no, no.
Mr. Jermaine?
All set.
Yeah, and I'll just reiterate, I'm, I'm happy to see that this property is gonna be used again as well. And, uh, number of cars on site's gonna be important to me in the layout and the traffic pattern. So that'll all be worked on as we move forward. That, that concludes this agenda item and our agenda. Any questions or comments from anybody? Nothing.
Comment, uh, Mark, just kind of follow up with our, uh, with the board doing the, uh, whatever they need to do to get our procedure changed. So, uh, an extension, uh, of a, uh, plan, you know, is required, uh, a vote for the whole group rather than just the chair. Um, have we got, um, you know, any further work on that? That would be between Judy and of course Nancy.
Of the, where Nancy?
I'm hoping that'll be on next week's agenda to get it started.
Great.
That's good news. Anybody else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Seconded by Mr. Rosito, meeting is adjourned.